Okay, this special meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this afternoon have been posted as required by state law. Really want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to television viewers. Thank you, Dr. Kazanis and Duron for being here with us today. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. As I shared last week, the Board of Trustees is so deeply saddened to hear about Dr. Kincaid's decision to retire this fall. Yet, we are extremely grateful for her leadership over these last five years. Waco ISD is making huge strides in academic achievement, attendance, athletics, fine arts, and just about every program we offer. While we begin our efforts to hire the next Superintendent, Dr. Kincaid is continuing her work on behalf of our students and staff through her participation and attendance today at the College Board National Superintendent's Advisory Council Meeting. The Board of Trustees wants to assure not only our community, but our parents, our staff, and our students that we are focused on continuing to build on all, excuse me, on all that has been accomplished over these last five years and honoring what we have achieved as a district. The Waco ISD Board of Trustees will now go into closed session at 1:32 pursuant of the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Sections Point 074 and Point 071. Great. We're gonna do, we're gonna go into closed session, we'll come back, and then we'll have you guys present. Thank you.
Make a motion to use Tasby Executive Search Services for the search of our next Superintendent.
Okay, I will entertain a second. Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Mr. Grant, is there any discussion? Mr. Davis, is there any discussion?
Yes, no disrespect to Tasby, I would have really loved to hear from a variety of search firms before we made this decision, but I respect the decision of the Board.
Mr. Vedanya, any discussion? Mr. Gillery, any discussion?
Yes, a little bit. I looked into five different search firms, and what I did see and what I did like about Tasby is the integrity piece, knowing that they are fair in their process. I heard from a number of Superintendents and Assistant Superintendents out there when I knew we were gonna go through this process, and that's, that was my determination as far as making this decision. I do agree with Trustee Davis, I would have liked to have seen more firms presented, but I did already do the research on Tasby, and I do like that piece to where they deal in integrity and fairness in the process and bringing about a diverse group of Superintendents out there, and that's really what we're looking for. I do want us to take our time in making good decisions in this process. This is important, this is the most important part of our job as a Board, is selecting the next Superintendent, and we have to do our due diligence in that piece.
Mr. Ochoa, any discussion? Mr. Patton, any discussion?
No.
Yes, Mr. Grant, sure.
I want our current leaders in the community to know that we carry a burden or a joyful process actually that creates attention, and that we want our current staff, administrators, teachers, and parents to know that we want to do the very best thing for them. We want to make decisions that honors what has been done up to this point, and yet we know the gravity of this search. It's critical that we are together in this moving forward. It's critical that we do everything we can in a reasonable realm to find the very best person that fits the heart and soul of Waco ISD. And so, there is this already-not-yet. We have to push, but we have to be cautious. We have to strive forward, but we have to be careful. And so, I would love to interview five firms. I too have done lots of research. I'm very comfortable with Tasby. I know many of the people that are in this process, but yet, there is this tension, and I feel a need to push forward. I feel a need to honor the work that's been done, but please know, those that we are trying to honor, that we are going to be careful. We are gonna be cautious. We are going to be together. If not, we won't move forward yet. And so, thank you.
May I ask? Yes, Mr. Patton.
To add on to what Trustee Grant said, we've been really blessed with a leader who stepped in during a hard time and made tough decisions and has led the district to the place that we are now. We are growing, we are making strides, we are seeing great products from the district coming out. And so, the person that we pick next is going to have big shoes to fill, to reach out to the community, all sides of the community, all areas of the community, and make sure that they feel heard. So, when we do make our selection, we are going to give due diligence. We don't want to lose the great staff that we have, the employees that we have, who are making this district shine. We do not want to lose families or lose families' trust. So, when we pick the person that we pick, we are taking all of that into very serious consideration, and we will be very sensitive and thoughtful in our choice as we seek to find Dr. Kincaid's replacement. So, to the community, we will be listening, and we want to hear from you, but do know we're taking this very seriously. We want to keep our staff, we want to keep our teachers, we want to keep our families, and we want to continue to see the growth that we are seeing. That's it.
Mr. Patton, I will say that I have seen Dr. Kincaid work relentlessly these last five years and accomplish something that I had always hoped and dreamed I would begin seeing in Waco ISD. There are frameworks, there are systems, there are things that have been put in place. There is a talent pool here in leadership on principle on campuses, leaderships within our teacher, within our teachers, even in that regard, leadership here in our central office. And it is, she had a remarkable talent for pulling in, really, bright shining talent to this district. And I think it is, I would say, my personal objective to continue those systems of excellence and to see them continue that momentum that we have gained as a district, to see the next Superintendent step into that and continue to grow it. Because I think we have made really significant gains, and there's always more to be done. You can ask any teacher, there's always more work to be done, and I think that is within and throughout education. So, I am thankful that Tasby is here to even present because you guys are local, connected to the community, and local and yet have a wide breadth across the state. So, I appreciate that, that level of expertise, that thoroughness, and like what Keith said, that integrity. And then, again, I agree with Jonathan and Jeremy, there is a tension. You want the best, and I think that is the heart of this Board, is we want the absolute best, because we want the best not only for our students, but we want it for our community, we want it for our staff, and we want it for our administration. And so, with that, I will take a vote. We have one abstention. Mr. Ochoa is abstaining from this vote, so those of you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, with the exception of Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Kazanis, would you like to come up to the podium and kind of present real quick? And Mr. Grant, if you need to slip out, you're more than welcome to. Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yes, we're representatives, my name is George Kazanis, and I'm here today to represent Tasby Executive Search Services. In addition to that, I did have a presentation and a successful proposal, so would you like me to go through that process with everyone else?
Yeah, just a rough framework so that everyone kind of understands what it entails.
Sure, I'd be happy to. To my left, I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Robert Duron, and you might know Dr. Duron from a former University High School graduate, right?
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
Just a couple of years.
Certainly, he's had an esteemed career as an educated retired Superintendent, worked for Tasby for a number of years in Associate Executive Director type of role, went part-time, and I got to swoop him up in my division, so he works with executive searches now. As you all probably know me, a former Superintendent of Midway ISD, China Spring ISD, graduated from West High School. My dad, though, was a 1953 grad of Waco High School, just behind us here. He was fortunate, he was one of the ones that, when they released early, on that May 11th, he went home. He didn't come downtown. He always would say that story. So, long routes here in the Waco area myself, so again, thank you for the trust that you've put into us. Just real quickly, I already introduced Robert to you, but the other senior consultant is Dr. Marion Strauss. Dr. Strauss, I don't know if you met her last time on some of your previous searches, but Dr. Strauss has been in executive searches for well over a decade, about 10 years now. Former Superintendent, retired, also in a number of districts across Texas, knows her stuff, has a strong network, and will be assisting as well in our division. One of the things about Tasby, mentioned in y'all's comments earlier, was of course, now, of course, you have this local connection, but you also have a statewide net. Starting on December 1st of last year, Tasby merged my division, which was Field Services, with Executive Search Services. They asked me to leave both of those divisions, and I happily said so when Mr. Butch Felkner retired. And so, by merging both of those divisions, now that is the expectation of all of the Field Service Representatives to also work and be a part of the Executive Search Services. And so, you can see the team, they call on districts all across Texas. This team has certain regions assigned to them, but the benefit of that is, is that they're actually in the offices of Superintendents, they can visit with Superintendents, they attend all of the Regional Advisory Council type meetings at the different service centers, all of our conferencing conferences. They're, for example, right now, in the summer, attending Superintendent retreats all across Texas. So, when we are hired by a school district, then they know about that as well and begin that process of informal advertising. Of course, we go through our formal advertising and promotion efforts, but this team does that. As you can see, all of them have well over 30-plus years of experience, former Superintendents all across Texas. But on the far right down there is Joy Rivera. Joy is our Program Manager, and Joy will also be your contact person too. Joy is full-time, works in our division in Executive Search Services, and will be able to answer questions and emails and calls and steps along the way. We will be providing more information to the district, to your Board President as well. It's called Process Books, things like that, that they're step-by-step. They certainly can be adapted, but they're step-by-step to help you along the way with agenda postings, possible scripts, things like that, so that it helps your Board President as well as you as Board Members and your staff along the way. Our process, though, is all-inclusive fees that are set. The only fees that are in addition to what we charge is during your second round of interviews. If you have some finalists come back for a second round type of interview, we just request that you, if they request reimbursement, that you do that. But we'll take care of it ourselves and then just build the district. You won't even be involved at all with invoicing and all that kind of thing, so. All right, so after that, then, let's see, in our process, though, one of the things that we would like to do, I'd love to get on your calendar, get on your schedule, is a planning meeting. And a planning meeting is critical. A planning meeting is probably one of the most important things that we will do. In that planning meeting, we'll set your calendar. It's important for us at Tasby to understand what your expectation is for your next Superintendent to come onboard. I do appreciate a copy now of your 24-25 school calendar and looking at that, and also appreciate Dr. Kincaid and her retirement, looking at the end of September, September 30th, if I'm not mistaken. So, I really think it's a doable process, again, working with Dr. Kincaid, working with you as a Board and the district, that we might be able to transition without the need for an interim Superintendent or Acting Superintendent, things like that. From personal experience is what I did when I retired from Midway ISD, was able to do that, and it just was a very smooth transition, and I do recommend that often. Now, sometimes you do need an interim, it just happens, it occurs, but with Dr. Kincaid's wishes and retirement date at the end of September, I think that will help us a lot. However, we have a lot of work to do, though, still, in terms of deciding. And one of the things that I want to emphasize is a full commitment from all of you on the dates of when we interview. I cannot recommend that you set dates and we invite candidates for, for example, first round, and if somebody has a conflict, cannot participate, let's say, within the first round of interviews, and then wants to participate again on the second round, I need full seven of you and your participation in that. So, I know you'll do that, but I mean, that's just critical. That's why the dates and looking at calendars and your calendars, because everyone has, is busy. You have, I realize that, and you have things that come up. One of the things, though, we also recommend is you don't officially adopt this timeline because there could be emergencies. We always allow a little bit, called wiggle room, in the calendars, maybe if something needed to be bumped a week, something happens where one or more of you had an emergency, things like that. We always want to give ourselves a little bit of leeway for that to occur, but it's, but your candidates, at least they have that general idea or good with that, understanding when first rounds will occur, understanding when maybe a second round, when you name that lone finalist, and then when you want to vote to hire, so that he or she can plan as well. So, other things that, you know, besides the planning meeting and the timeline is, I'd certainly want to finalize your qualifications characteristics for your next Superintendent. We certainly, in our research, certainly working with 800 to 900 districts, have some suggestions of some of the things that you are just given that are needed for your next Superintendent, but we also want to be sure that we do this as uniquely as possible and listen to you. We can do that in a number of ways in a public meeting like this. Dr. Duron and I could come in and meet one-on-one with you and to talk about that and develop that profile, we're more than happy to do so. And the other thing is discuss community involvement. And what we offer with community involvement, we certainly, of course, with surveying, we have big success with online type of surveys that go out to your community, that go out to your staff, that allow people to respond. We prepare, it's called a Leadership Report for you. We like to provide all of that information to you so that you have the opportunity to read all comments. The other thing we can do, though, is in-person community involvement. And again, living in Waco, that's certainly easy for me to do that, decide how you would like that. We always suggest if you do in-person community involvement sessions, at least offer one for staff, because it's a little bit of a different audience, and then offer one or two for the community. Could be more around lunchtime meetings, or could, in addition to evening type meetings, things like that. So, we can talk about that, what you would like to see. Again, there are listening sessions. There are listening sessions between your consultants here at Tasby and the community. That information then comes back to you to help inform you. And that, with that information that you gain from the community involvement, from the surveying, it's twofold. It's number one, to help you, when you look at all of the candidates that come to you, one of the things that we have, we're proud of, is our own system called VidCruder, where applicants apply to, but then you have, once that application deadline closes, you have full access to all of that. We certainly will do it, again, in our planning meeting, however you tell us to do. We can help screen for you in terms of reducing candidates to a certain number before you decide which ones to interview, or we can certainly keep it open where you can look at each and every candidate. In our Candidate VidCruder process, of course, it's traditional, papers are requested, let's say transcripts and letters of recommendation, some application type materials, resumes, cover letters, all of that. We also have some unique questions we ask candidates that they respond to, but one of the things we do as well is we have a video component, and in that video component, a couple of questions are asked, and they, it's only take no more than about five minutes on your part to view that, three to five minutes, but it does give you a window into that individual. How do they present themselves? It gives you a name to a face so that you kind of see who this particular individual is too. So, that's open to you as well, and certainly is a screening tool. So, again, where I was going with that was the community involvement sessions help you then during that screening, do these different candidates, if you read their resumes, their body of work, are they matching what we're hearing from the community and what we know as Board Members and as y'all stated from the work so far in the last five years that Dr. Kincaid has done? Is this individual able to continue that and take it to the next level or not? So, that helps you. And then finally, it helps you, once we get together, one of the things after the candidate period closes and you all review and we come to you, we will have an executive session where we look at all of the candidates and decide which ones to bring back in that meeting, but we also will talk about the format of your interview. What questions are you going to ask? And that community involvement survey really can help along that way too. We have samples, but we can certainly tailor some different questions too along the way so you can probe your candidates too. So, I just want to, again, highly suggest that as well. Okay, so, I've already pretty much gone through each one of these already. One of the things that I will, of course, emphasize throughout all of this is that we take care of it for you in terms of the applicants. We answer questions from applicants. We help applicants, that's why Joy Rivera is there to help them through any questions they have with the application process. The other thing, though, is that we schedule the interviews. We have a system, a fair and impartial process when we schedule interviews, that they go online and go in and choose a time in order to interview with them. We do all of that. But after you go through the process, we certainly suggest a first round of interview process that's very, for a better word, more scripted, you're asking the same questions of each candidate, it's timed. We suggest interviewing at least six candidates, but that's up to you, could be six, seven, really no more than eight. After that, it gets, sometimes it gets blurred who you're interviewing. And then, we suggest that then you have a second round, a much, much more informal process. That second round interview is a time to invite the candidate back, maybe invite the candidate and his or her spouse or family, have a short reception, meet the person, and then go back for a second round, and then ask questions based on things that you heard in the first round. What are some things that that candidate said? Does that candidate have the opportunity to expand upon some of the things he or she has done in their body of work? One of the things I always say is, in a first round interview, you don't want to fall in love on the first date. So, it's just a second round is, again, an opportunity for you really to see this person in that informal setting. But the final thing, though, is after that, then you, then we will coordinate with you, if you so choose, a site visit to your final candidate. And it's not public lone finalists just yet, but it's also where we will work discreetly for contingents of the Board, no more than three of you, to possibly go visit another district. And that way, then you could get an opportunity to meet with some key personnel in the district, maybe key Board Members in that district, and then also some suggestions of where to go in the community for lunch, things like that, to get a feel for the candidate. Okay? So, the final selection and transition support, again, remember, state law is 21-day waiting period after you name your lone finalist. You do have a 21-day waiting period, and then you have your vote to hire. But one of the things we offer at Tasby, though, is a transition workshop. And so, in a transition workshop, this means after either three months, four months, maybe up to six months, we'll come back. I would love to come back along with a Board Development Consultant who will work with the Board, as well as this new Superintendent, and have a transition workshop. We want to see how things are going, open, honest conversation, gives you time to be working with your new Superintendent, as well as work on some things, of course, to be sure you're staying on the right foot, on the right track. So, that's part of our process. And again, some testimonials, you've probably seen, I have all that in front of you in the folders that I left for you to look for, some different highlights there of districts. Again, we are currently working, and the timing of this is really very advantageous for us because we're wrapping up some districts. Just so, again, I appreciate you hiring Tasby, but one thing about Tasby is, is that we will serve districts of 200 or less students for Superintendent search, as well as our largest systems. And I'm personally working, for example, out in El Paso, in Socorro ISD, I'm in United ISD in Laredo, I'm down at San Benito in the Valley, and they're wrapping up. Of course, they're not competing, of course, with Waco, but we're wrapping those up soon this summer, as well as, yesterday, I was in Early ISD, which is near Brownwood. So, and so, we're all across Texas, but again, that gives us that vast experience and that vast knowledge of candidate pool, not only of sitting Superintendents, but also of maybe high-quality Deputy Assistant Superintendents ready for that next step in their career. Okay, so, I picked a good image from your website because it's right behind you as well, on your mural. So, any questions along the way? I did have a proposed timeline, I didn't, again, want to be presumptuous about that, but I really highly suggest either calling another meeting or at your next regular meeting, something to that nature, where we can talk about a timeline and kind of finalize some things along those lines.
That's great.
Questions?
Mr. Ochoa.
Just a comment, really. I know you've got deep roots here in Waco. It's my understanding, Dr. Duron grew up in Waco and also is a former Waco ISD employee. Many of us have worked for Waco ISD, almost all of us have kids in Waco ISD, all of us have friends who are teachers and administrators and studio workers in Waco ISD. So, of the thousands of searches you guys have done, just, I hope you understand, and this is with all due respect, that we expect your best work for this district.
Of course, and one thing you could also get in, in return, is honest and transparency about it. That's why your timeline and calendar is tentative. What if I come to you and say, "We're still recruiting hard, but we need more time"? That's, you're gonna get that type of information. I'm not gonna just put a candidate pool in front of you and say, "Well, this is the best you have, good luck with that." So, I'm just saying that. So, the other thing is that I highly, again, our operation is to have two-way communication in that area so that you know where we stand with it as well, and that we're comfortable and we feel confident about any one of the different candidates. Again, we're gonna come with you and have recommendations as well of some top quality, but we also want to be sure that that's open to you to look to at it, but we're gonna know if the pool is strong, and the pool, any one of those then, as I said, could be the strong leader. I live here, and it would be really tough not to do my best work because I live here too, and walk the streets as well of the city, and so, I think I can give you that guarantee.
That's fantastic. Yes, Mr. Gillery.
Yeah, I really don't want to wait till July, or can we go ahead and get that soft timeline that you're talking about, the timeline?
Sure. Robert, right behind you there. So, one of the things, I just worked back, and if the staff would be happy to, I can, we can make copies of it real quick.
Yeah, I mean, I don't need you to deliver verbally, I just, I want it in my hands so I can put eyes on it.
Right. So, the, I just worked back from an October 1st start date, so just working back on the, on the timeline, was looking at then, having that 21 days already taken care of and vote to hire, there always is inevitably going to, inevitably going to be maybe some transition, maybe a week or two just before this person has to, of course, resign from his or her current district, things like that too. So, there's always that. But, and looking at that, we were, we were really basing that on that, and it is, it's a 90-to-120-day window. 120's a little too long, but 90 days is generally a very good amount of time in order to conduct a thorough search. But I was looking at the calendars, and one of the things that we have to think about is your starting school. And one of the timelines that we were proposing was really looking at conducting interviews, but that was like your first week of school, starting here. So, that's why I had a little bit of leeway in it, a little bit of time, we could bump that, but your August is gonna be very busy, based on interviewing and starting of school, things of that nature. And so, again, it can be adjusted any way you like. I mean, you hired us, so that can be adjusted any way you see fit. But I did notice that already, sir, when I saw the dates, was looking at your school calendar, I think you start on the Thursday, the 15th, and that was one of the days we had selected for interviews, so we might, we can move it a week.
Dr. Kazanis?
Yes, sir.
So, when can we expect to start receiving info from your organization regarding the talent pool that you're pulling?
What we like to do is, of course, give it a couple of weeks' time about, because we have some postings to do, things of that nature, a couple of weeks. And then after that, then there, it's correspondence to you, just kind of giving you an update of how many we have so far applicants, and just email type communication along the way. Because we are, we're recruiting, we're posting, we are, as I said, mentioned to you, Field Service Representatives are talking about the job all across Texas, and it's published not only on Tasby's website, we look at texasisd.com, of course, we also look at Tessa's website. We also look at Tessa's website, the school administrator. Being Tasby, we also have the ability to post positions at other school board associations across the country that have similar organizations like Tasby. It's kind of a reciprocal, so we work, you know, for more of a national outreach in that particular, in that, in that regard. We also look at LinkedIn as the possibilities and things of that nature, some of the social media type of platforms.
That's great.
Everybody have a copy in front of them? Okay?
Got a copy. Our tentative schedule. So we're looking, we'll look forward to getting you guys down to do a planning session with us so we can calendar some of this, kind of tentatively, get it up on everyone's calendar because the beginning of the school year is usually fast and furious and then when you add a superintendent search, it's, we need to buckle up. So there's a lot of work ahead of us.
But just real quickly, does that then, is that, is it clear? You understand in terms of the dates and looking at Dr. Kinkanon's retirement date and that's what we were using as a guide?
Sounds wonderful. Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks again for the opportunity and your trust. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming too. Appreciate it. And with that, we are adjourned at 3:12.